Okay.
Okay, so time now is 7:11. The meeting is called to order. First item is review and acceptance of the minutes from last month's meeting.
I did notice, Rachel, that my name was misspelled once. I know it's a tough one. Got it like two times. There's this one where I think the Y is missing under the.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's fine. It happens.
I did do a copy paste, honestly.
Okay, was there anything else? Okay, if not, I have a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted after the typo.
Elizabeth motioned to accept. Do we have a second?
A second, Melanie.
What was next? I don't have the, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'm trying to think what it was next.
Usually we do treasurer's report next.
Okay, treasurer's report.
Hold on, I think we have to vote. We've, we've got a motion and a second, but then I think we need to actually vote to approve.
Okay, vote to approve.
So. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, next up, the treasurer's report.
Okay. Treasurer's report, the statements were sent out with the materials. So thank you, Joe, for sending them out. And thank you, as always, Jason, for putting together such clear statements. On the statement of financial position, which was the, which is the assets and liabilities, nothing too surprising. We are slowly but surely spending money, but we are also paying down debts. So that's pretty, say, pretty, pretty normal on the statement of financial position. On the, messed up, sort of order. On the statement of activity, which is the revenues and expenses, we start to see the first of kind of the comparisons with last year, where our numbers are going to be down compared to last year on some of our fees. But that's just because we're not bringing in fees for the copier, because we're not currently charging for the copier. So these aren't necessarily big numbers. So for example, from January to April of 2019, we brought in $144 in fax fees. This year, we only brought in 132, but that does give us that negative percentage change in that last column. So even though it's not like a big chunk of our revenues, we are probably going to see negatives in that column because of the library closure. So, so that's just something that's not alarming, just something that we'll probably get used to, to see. The only other things that there were questions on were the increase in telephone and telecommunications. And that's because of our two months of our new hotspot. So that made sense. And then the $700 worth of miscellaneous expenses, and those are our brand new loaner ukuleles. So those were the only questions that the finance committee had on the statement of activity. However, we are more than happy to take anyone else's questions on the statement of activity. Any questions? Okay, so moving right along to our budget versus actual. There wasn't anything that drew questions on this. Again, since it's kind of, it hasn't, it feels like forever since we've been in this kind of altered COVID reality. But in terms of months, it actually hasn't been all that long. So we're not seeing any wild deviations from, from any of our, our budgets, except for, I think there was some expected increase in digital materials. And we know that there will be even more spending on digital materials. But the finance committee talked with Joe about ways to at least offset a part of that, because we actually, we don't expect our actual tangible print materials to be used quite as hard. Plus, we're, we're here to serve the community, and right now, the community needs digital materials. So that is the only place that really caught our attention on that. But other than that, we didn't have any questions about the budget versus actual. Does anyone here have questions about the budget versus actual statement? Okay, so that was all that we had on the financial statements for the treasurer's report. We'll talk a little bit more about the, what we talked about at the finance committee meeting here in a few minutes. But if I can go ahead and get a motion to approve the treasurer's report, that would be awesome.
Well.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Do we have a second? Thank you, Dan. All right, all those in favor of approving the treasurer's report and financial statements, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? And are there any abstentions? Was that an abstention, Melanie, or are you an aye?
I was an aye.
Okay, perfect.
Did I, did I flail? Sorry.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you so much. And that is. Okay, so either back to Amanda or Dan.
I'm sorry, you guys, I just, I, I, I'm sorry. I, two weeks, two months in a row. But we're on, thank you, Amanda, for taking over for me. And director's report, Joe, your turn.
Okay, so as I've intimated to our friends who were here a little while ago, it's been a long day in terms of developments. So, so as, as everybody's probably aware at this point, the capital district is very close to being approved for reopening in what's called phase one. There's one outstanding hurdle that has to be crossed. Yesterday, as of yesterday, there were 180 something tracers who had to be hired by Albany County, or I guess throughout the capital district, in order to track the contacts that are made between people who are diagnosed as being, as having COVID. And once those people are hired, the capital district is going to be able to begin phase one. So businesses that fall into that phase one category are going to begin to, to open. That may happen as early as tomorrow. In fact, it probably will happen tomorrow. Libraries are not part of phase one, as we have mentioned before. However, we heard this morning that the Rensselaer County direct executive, Steve McLaughlin, is putting a lot of pressure on the libraries that he has some measure of control over in Rensselaer County, putting pressure on them to jump the gun and reopen, not waiting until libraries turn in line comes up. And he has put a significant amount of pressure on the East Green Bush Library and on the Troy Public Library. I don't know exactly what measure of control he has over them, but it's significant enough that Tim Burke from Upper Hudson has been in touch with him. And the compromise that they have reached is that as soon as phase one begins, he is approving those libraries to begin curbside delivery. So Rensselaer County libraries, if they like, may begin curbside delivery within phase one. At our director's meeting this morning, that prompted a lot of discussion amongst the directors about preparedness, about the wisdom of doing this. There was divided opinion. Some libraries are ready to begin today. And many others are not. After a bunch of discussion, the discussion sort of coalesced around the idea of most libraries being ready to open as of June 1st, so about two weeks from today. I felt and feel that there is no first mover advantage. I don't think that there is anything to be gained by going faster than, than, than we absolutely have to. However, I do acknowledge that once libraries begin to reopen, then we all ought to do it in, in conjunction. So in that spirit, I had a phone call with, with Tim Wiles, the director of the Gilderland Library this afternoon. His board meeting is on Thursday. And initially, in, in our discussion between the two of us, he was thinking that he would reopen this coming Tuesday, the Tuesday after Memorial Day. After the discussion between the two of us, we agreed that neither of us would open any earlier than June 1st. But he would like to open on June 1st. And so I am proposing that we, we reopen for curbside delivery on June 1st, provided that we have sufficient masks, gloves, and antiseptic wipes to do that. We do not now. As I mentioned in my director's report, we've had some difficulty finding those things to buy, finding people that are selling them. Upper Hudson has been on the hunt for those materials. They say they've got a good stock. And we'll have more details to us about that in the coming days. So I take them at their word that they have a good stock and that that stock will be continuously, that it's, it's not going to be a, you know, one-time cash of this stuff so that we get through the first week and all of a sudden, you know, no longer have a supply of gloves or masks or whatever. And I think that we can be ready. I think that we can be ready on June 1st to reopen. I think the community is certainly ready for us to, to, to be open. I think that after a couple of weeks, assuming that Albany County businesses reopen, you know, starting tomorrow, you know, I think there will be, after a certain point, there will be, you know, sort of a question of, these guys are open, why aren't you guys open? So I acknowledge that there's, you know, there's some, there's, there's a, there's a case to be made. Thoughts, questions, concerns, ideas?
Joe, how do you envision curbside pickup working?
The way that I think it'll work is that we will encourage people to request materials through the online catalog or call in to request either specific or general materials. So they might say, I'd like a copy of I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings, or they might say, I'd like, you know, 20 children's books for the next couple of weeks, or, you know, five movies, you know, anything with Humphrey Bogart would be great. We will package those together and check them out to people, place them in plastic bags. The bags will have the patron's name written on them. We will put them on a table in the vestibule. When the patron is ready to pick it up, they will enter the vestibule, they will find their bag, they will take it, they will not enter the library, and they will go on their way. That's my idea.
So will there be, will there be something that will prevent people from coming into the library, aside from just a table there?
I have to see whether, yes, there's going to be a sign, first of all, that says, do not enter the library. It may be the case, there's not a, there's not a mechanical lock
Right.
on the door, but there may be, and I have to check this, the automatic door opener may have a lock setting that we may be able to, to use that as a, as a locking mechanism. There are, there are probably safety concerns with having a locked door with staff inside, as we learned from the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory.
But. Oh, your references to there are just wonderful.
Yeah, I know, that's fine. I knew exactly what he was talking about.
Why the Caged Bird sings, the Triangle Shirt Factory, my gosh, Joe, wonderful.
So, so we might, we might want to think about that. But at the, at a minimum, there will be a sign on or near the door handles that says, please do not enter the library.
Is interlibrary loan going to be operational as well?
At a certain point, the, the pipes will start flowing again. Tim Burke has a meeting with Arnoff tomorrow to talk about that, the courier service. So there's, there's a couple of issues related to the courier service. One, excuse me, one issue is that we have, Upper Hudson has, in the discussions that they've had with Arnoff so far, Arnoff has agreed to temporarily quarantine any materials that are coming through the pipes. So once they get to Upper Hudson, they're going to stay at Upper Hudson, or Arnoff, maybe Arnoff has a warehouse that they will keep them at for three days. So that by the time they get to the destination, they should be clean. They should be disinfected, time should have disinfected those materials. It probably will not be immediate. It probably will not be June 1st. It probably will not be the first day that libraries are open, that the courier service will resume. Initially, patrons will be requesting materials. And if we cannot fill them from our own stock, from our own inventory, then they'll just have to wait. But if it's, if it is something that we have in our inventory, then, then we will fulfill that hold.
What about the returns?
Yeah. So, Dick, I'll, I'll come back to you in a second. On the returns, on the returns, we will, I had initially envisioned a time before we started loaning materials out on a curbside delivery basis, where we would be, just be open to receive materials back increasingly, as I think about it. That makes less sense to me. But that doesn't mean that we can't do that. We don't have to start with curbside pickup. In fact, I, I would imagine that when we say we are open for limited services, more people are going to want to return materials than to borrow materials. There's 1,120 items out there that have been out for at least two months. And I'm, I'm getting calls, I'm getting emails, you know, about, can I, can I return it yet? Please, can I return it? I really want to return it. So that, that's going to be a major component of the curbside. In that case, we'll just do the bin. We'll just do the bin and we'll empty the bin. We'll have staff empty the bin, you know, every half hour, every hour, depends on, you know, how long it takes for it to fill up. Once those materials are returned, they will be isolated in the community room. They will be handled with gloves, as minimal touching as possible. These things are not radioactive. So it's not, you know, but they are potentially vectors for, for disease. They will go into the community room. They will be, they won't be checked in yet. They will be dated, or the range of materials on a table or on a shelf will be dated. After three days has elapsed, then we can check those things in and re-shelve them and recirculate them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a stupid question, but like, do they know if a book's closed? If three days is enough for like time to disinfect it?
Yeah, you know, they've had, they've had two months to figure this out, right? The conventional wisdom is that it does, that three days is more than sufficient for any lingering virus to become sufficiently inactive.
So, Joe, this is Deborah. I, I want to take a step back for a moment, but I think I cut in front of. Did someone else have a question first?
Dick, Dick had been, had sort of had his hand raised. Dick, did you have something?
How many staff people are going to be helping? Go to the curb.
Well.
Somebody agree there?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it would be only one person working on that at a time. At any given time while we're open, there will only be two staff members at a maximum in the building. They will not be in the same room. If one person is working at the desk or working on the, on the, the curbside delivery, the other person will be in the workspace in the, in the storage room or in the community room. They, they will not come within six feet of, of one another. All of the staff members that I have spoken to, which is all of them, say that they are willing to do this or something like it. So that's, that's how that's going to go. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure. Deborah?
Yeah.
Joe, my question, I do, well, I actually have a bit of a, pardon me, allergies, a bit of an objection to the fact that, I'm not going to say this correctly, but I, I don't want us to make the decision to reopen based on political pressures that another county is experiencing. I understand the need to serve the public and that we do want to be present and open, but I just want to be cautious and make sure that we're, you know, taking all the considerations and doing all the appropriate due diligence to understand that we're ready to open. You know, I, I guess I, I feel that I want to express that we should not feel compelled to be under pressure because of what Rensselaer County is experiencing.
So I completely, wholeheartedly agree with you. What I think I would say about that is that it's not a direct pressure. If it were, if it were the case that a political leader were saying to us, the Altamont Free Library, you need to reopen tomorrow, I would feel on very firm footing in saying, no, that's, you, you know, that we're, we're, you know, we, we're not ready tomorrow. We can't be ready tomorrow. The staff can't be ready tomorrow. The community isn't ready tomorrow. And so, you know, so no. This, the, the fact that the precipitating incident is this political pressure that was put on Rensselaer County libraries by, by the, the Rensselaer executive, that's not the precipitating incident for us. The precipitating incident that causes us to reopen is, first of all, Albany County and the capital district broadly reopening in phase one. But second, the, the cascade of, of secondary effects. So because Rensselaer County has this pressure being put on it, a compromise is reached. And because the compromise is reached, libraries make decisions and, you know, as a, as a tertiary result of all of those other, you know, cascade of decisions being made, we are, I feel a more pressure than I probably would to open more quickly than I otherwise would. And by the way, you know, the, the, the difference between when we would optimally reopen in my, you know, in my way of thinking versus when we are now talking about reopening is probably just a couple of days. And so it's, it's not a matter of whether we reopen on June 1st or July 1st. It's a matter of whether we open on June 1st or June 8th, maybe.
Okay.
Um. So it, does that, does that sort of answer your question? Or it was a question, but yeah.
It does.
Thank you for your.
And, and real quick, Joe, I also, something that I think is interesting in, in comparing everyone across the spectrum's phases of reopening is that really no one's phase looks exactly the same. So our phase one is essentially Starbucks throughout the entire experience. So we're not really even reopening to the public. All we're doing is allowing an employee or two, during phase one, all we're doing is allowing an employee or two back in the building and doing, and accepting materials back and, and loaning them out.
Yeah.
So, so quite honestly, having, having worked up the nerve to get Starbucks just in the last week after a long drought, that is exactly what they're doing, actually, with the, with the table and the vestibule and, and everything. So so I, I like that, as much as I'm hesitant to reopen anything, the fact that our phase one doesn't actually involve us having any public in the library at all
Yeah.
makes me feel better, because there are definitely businesses and other organizations that have been operating at this level of openness throughout the, the pandemic closure. So, so I don't feel like we're first movers on this.
Right, we know what this looks like. We've seen this, this is, you know, you know, if, if we've, if you've been to a liquor store, if you've been to, you know, Stewart's, anyplace, we've seen a, you know, a, a more, a further along version of what we're talking about here. So we're not, you know, this is, you know, the other thing here is that by June 1st, other regions, the Finger Lakes, the North Country, maybe the Southern Tier, Central New York, some of those other regions that have already entered phase one, those libraries will have started doing their own curbside service and will have their, their experience to, to look to, to see how we can do it better. And, you know, the one very nice thing about librarians is that, you know, we, we, we talk quite a lot amongst each other. We're very collegial. And so those, those best practices, they, they tend to, you know, develop pretty quickly and they tend to get transmitted pretty quickly. So I, I think that we will have a better idea of what this looks like, you know, say, a week from now.
Joe, when the time comes when we are actually open to the public, is the building ready to accept people? I mean, what shape is it, is it, is it, is the interior right now?
The building is not ready right now to, to house patrons. It's, and we'll, we'll get to this a little bit when we talk about, talk about building projects. But it's, it's in, it's in some, it's in a pretty bad state right now because we have taken everything out of the, because Paul has been working on a renovation project in the storage room. And so everything has gotten pulled out of the, the storage room. So, you know, when you're, you know, And so everything has gotten pulled out of the, the storage room. So, you know, when you're, you know, redoing your closet or whatever, and you pull everything out and you've got piles of different things everywhere. And that's kind of what it looks like. The community room is, is, is in a, quite a state right now. I have been coming in once or twice a week to consolidate and bin things and organize. But that will pick up as we get closer now that we're, we've got this sort of end game in sight. And over this, this coming week, although this, this week is pretty busy for me, but I will make time this week to, to be in, to finish off the organization. And again, Paul will talk about where he's at on the renovation.
I didn't, I didn't mean clutter. I mean, shape, shape. I mean, it needed a good cleaning or a good, you know, to accept people.
It does. It does need a good cleaning. It could probably use a couple of good cleanings. Claudia Leclerc has been, has been back to work and she has been back in on her regular schedule. She has been in now twice to do deep cleans of the, the building for the first time since March 13th, when we closed. Once the, once we reopen, so, you know, if, if we go with, with my thing and it's June 1st, Claudia usually comes in for three hours every two weeks. I would like to increase that to two hours every week to do deep cleans of high-touch services, any place that employees or the public would be initially, it's just going to be employees, but you know, at some point it will be, it will be the public as well. So I am going to, I would like to increase her the frequency of her visits to, to every week to make sure that, you know, deep cleans are being done in addition to all of the cleaning that the staff is going to be doing at the end of every shift and in between, you know, as, 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 as at the shift switches, as people take over throughout the course of the day, there will be constant ongoing cleaning and then a weekly deep clean on Saturdays. The building also, we are, before we reopen to the public, there are a few other things that are going to be done for the building to prepare it, to encourage social distancing. We are going to tape out using painter's tape zones within the library. So that might be one aisle or an area in a, in a group of, group of shelves. And the rule is going to be only one person or, you know, set of family members can be in a zone at any given time. So that we're going to make those, we're going to make those zones. We're going to say only one person in this zone at a time. We are going to move around materials in the children's section. The shelves will be, will be moved to decrease the amount of play space, recreational space, and to increase the amount of space between shelves so that more people can be browsing the, the children's collection while maintaining social distancing at any given time. Toys are coming out. Seating is going to be, is going to come out so that the chairs next to the coffee table. One staff member on our meeting yesterday or last week proposed taking the couch away temporarily and using that additional space to move portions of the adult fiction section away from others so that, you know, more people can browse that while maintaining six feet distance. We don't have much space, but what space we do have in that, that central area as you enter the library, we can use that to encourage greater social distancing. So those are some things that we'll do to the building before the public is, comes back in.
Joe, I'm just looking quickly at your plan. It looks like what we're actually talking about on your reopening is phase two. So phase one is your, is the staff returning?
Yep.
Then to clean the building and get everything ready. When, when was that? When were you planning on that starting or hoping?
So this is what, this is what changed today. So initially, that would have started on or around June 1st. And that phase two, as I describe it, would have started maybe the next week. But this is all contingent, right? This is all contingent. This is, there are so many X factors here. When does, as I was putting this together, we didn't know that the capital region or when the capital region was going to be prime for starting phase one. We didn't know then and we still don't know exactly what phase the governor thinks that we belong in. And I'm using the word phase here to mean two different things. I mean, the phases that the governor has established, but also the phases of the plan that I, so we need to come up with a better other word. So if anybody has that, send it to me on a postcard. So as I'm thinking about it now, I am thinking that my phases one and two will run nearly concurrently so that we will be bringing in the staff to do the, the adjustments to the shelves and all of that. And I will do some of these things myself before any staff comes in. And we will begin accepting returns and doing curbside pickup at around the same time, starting on June 1st. It's a work in progress. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Thank you.
Well, it's not. And, you know, and I, but nothing about this is clear, right? I mean, but I'm, but I'm, we're all, you know, we're all doing our best. So I appreciate your role.
Yep. Not to belabor the point here, but I'm just curious, what's Voorheesville doing?
Voorheesville is maybe open well before this.
Okay. And is Gilderland going to do the same thing that we're planning to do in terms of the strategy that you have outlined tonight with us?
Tim is going to, Tim Wiles is going to send me his reopening plan after a staff meeting that he's having tomorrow.
Okay.
It will probably, as we were talking about it this afternoon, his description of his, you know, his timeline looks relatively similar to ours. They have a much bigger problem figuring out how you do curbs. For us, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, right. I mean, they have a lot more foot traffic than we have.
It's a lot more foot traffic and it's going to be a lot more foot traffic in a small space, right? So if you've got, if you've got all of these people who are going to be picking up their paper bags, how are those going to be secured? There, you know, there's, there's a much greater chance at Gilderland that, that somebody else's paper bag is going to walk away with the wrong person.
Yep.
You know, how do you monitor? Who's going to be the bouncer at their front door? There's, there's, there's all kinds of problems that they're figuring out that we don't necessarily have or have in much smaller fashion.
Okay. Three other quick things. And I, again, I don't want to keep, I know it's already 10 minutes before eight.
But.
Are we still going to, because this is going to be, as you say, a work in progress, are we still going to be waiving fines even well after we have reopened into this phase one approach? Because I mean, people may still be less wanting to bring things to the library. I don't know. I'm just thinking about people being people. That's all. So are we, are we going to start instituting fines right off the get-go again?
Yeah. Does it, does it create a now permissive to be here? So what I, I hadn't really thought about that too much, except to say that I hadn't thought about the specifics. I had thought.
I mean, we could say something like, we'll start finding people as of July 1st if we wanted to or something like that.
That sounds right.
Have months grace period to get their books back or something. So.
That, that sounds right to me. That sounds, July 1st sounds about right to me. You know, and it might be even earlier than that, but, but I don't, it's, it's not, by the end of the summer, certainly, we will have reinstated.
Okay, alright.
I don't necessarily think it creates a tremendous moral hazard to be, you know, a little bit forgiving. But yeah, July 1st sounds about right to me.
Okay. The other thing is, and I know you've thought about this, but I'm just going to throw it out. I mean, it's obviously, it's an incumbent on you as, as the face of the library and speaking for the board is, you know, we have to communicate this very clearly with our patrons. It might make sense to not only put it in your article every week that, you know, and what people can expect and not expect as well as on, on, on.
Facebook.
Yeah, that's the thing I'd call it. Thank you. And then maybe even, maybe you could even talk to Melissa about even doing an article about reopening so that there could be more of a presence. So people are written, so then she could ask you the pointed questions and in another way, just to get the word out to people as well.
I think that's a great idea. I think that we will probably at an Upper Hudson level do, you know, do something on this. I think that, you know, that, that Tim and the folks over at Upper Hudson will will, will do some, some media on this emphasizing that there's a variation, that different libraries are going to do this differently, but that libraries are starting to, to come back. But I like that idea. I will pitch that to, to Melissa and I'm sure that she will be formidable.
Joe, and even, even greater way too is Supervisor Barber does his daily updates and, and maybe between you, him and Tim, you know, maybe that's another way you could parlay it because a lot of people have signed, I'm signed up for it. A lot of people have signed up for that. And that may reach other people that may not read The Ultimate Enterprise or go on Facebook for us. Just so that we can put out there in case anybody does have those questions, they can kind of relay it back to you while we're, while we're still going to quote close. I think the idea, and I love it because my favorite sushi place does this, about like calling ahead to make sure your order is ready. And then they give you a number. So if it were to look at if it's too overwhelming for the staff to start doing this curbside stuff, we say, listen, we can do a dozen pickups a day. If you're going to shorten the hours and what that's going to look like and say, you know, you'll get a text message or an email that your curbside delivery is ready for pickup. So you don't get people congregating in the parking lot. There's, there's a lot of really great ways to manage that. And even the idea of a pickup table in the vestibule so that they can't walk past it. And you just put their little orders out there. And then you can see in from the glass that if that person's taking their order and then you can put another one out there or however you want to do it, but it really limits contact.
I like the idea of having the staff text or email when you know, when, when an order is ready.
It's ready.
Yeah. I wonder how you would do that from something other than a personal cell phone. There's probably a service that we can employ.
Or a lot of people think about it. When I get my Upper Hudson stuff, I get an email saying, oh, your book is ready for pickup.
Yeah. There's a latency there that we, is probably not desirable and it, it could be, it usually doesn't matter if it's an hour in, you know, in your, in your day. But if somebody has called in and they've, you know, they've ordered, you know, The Naked Gun 3, and it's an hour before they get that, that, that text, then, you know, that, that might be, so having, having the staff do it once they've pulled the item, I think that's probably the thing. And it probably will be a phone call unless we can find a, you know, text messaging service.
Yeah, I just, or something. You know, somebody might be able to say, listen, I won't be there until afternoon or after one o'clock. So at least you got a ballpark. So you can manage that influx
Yep.
of people wanting to take stuff out. And maybe, I don't know if it's an encouragement of, you know, if you know you want a couple of books, try to get them. So you, they're limiting, they're coming back and forth. Like you said, somebody may want 20 children's books all at once.
When, when people want children's books, they want 20 of them. So.
I can imagine. I remember the days. But I think you had, you had a lot of great steps in place in the way you're looking at this and how we can still service the public, but still maintain high standards of safety for the staff inside that building and for the general public.
Yeah, my question is something like that. Have you thought about how many hours you want to do this every day? Or how many days in a week do you want to do this?
So yes, yes, I've thought about it quite a lot. Gilderland and we are going to try to coordinate because we will both have limited hours, limited public hours initially. My thinking on this is that my most recent thinking on this is a 40-hour week, 10 to 6, Monday through Friday. No Saturdays, no Sundays. Of that time, not all of it will be public hours for a public pickup. So I think that the public pickup would probably be something like, you know, call it 12 to 6, 12 to 6 each of those days. That allows for a little bit of time in the morning to hold requests to do other other work that's not directly related to the curbside pickup, to film things for virtual programs, to do some of the cataloging, to do some of the, you know, book repair, to order, work on things for the summer reading project. So things like that. That is the best of my thinking right at this moment.
Anybody else? Joe, do you have anything else you want to add to your director's report?
I do. Yeah, we've so we've talked about, okay, there is a trustees meeting this coming Thursday, the 21st, it's kind of an open house, open call with Upper Hudson for any trustees, any library trustees that might have questions about the reopening process or the recommended, the guidelines that Upper Hudson has put together. So again, that's Thursday, May 21st, 6:30 PM. I will, after this meeting, I will send around, excuse me, the connection details for, for that meeting. So if anybody is interested, if anybody, I would like there to be at least one person from the board or from our orbit who takes part in that call. Originally, this call had been, or the trustee call had been scheduled for right now. And when it was scheduled for right now, knowing that you would all be doing this instead of that, I asked Yvette Terplick to sit in on that call and report back to the board, either she could join the meeting if it got over before this thing got over or by, by email. She would, if, if nobody, if nobody amongst you is willing to, is interested in doing the trustees meeting on Thursday at 6:30, then Yvette could, could probably do it.
Joe, I would be interested. This is Deborah, but we could talk about it offline.
Very good. Anybody else? It's, it's not limited. I don't think it's limited by participation. So anybody else who is interested, just, you know, ping me if you feel like it and let me know that you're going to be doing it. And once we've, once we know that folks will be will be participating, if you could just report back to the board afterwards, what you've, what you've learned, what you've found. Couple of other things. I've got a meeting with Mayor Deneen tomorrow morning to talk about, to talk about the concert series and we still don't know whether that's going to be possible. I increasingly feel like it will not be possible, just given all of the other things that are being canceled, all of the other kinds of gatherings that are being canceled. It will be heartbreaking if we are not able to do those, those concerts, but you know, it is what it is. Maybe we would think about doing a certain, sort of a hosting, a sort of a virtual concert. We have the money set aside. So maybe we would do that. I don't know. So that's tomorrow 10 AM to talk about that. We also have the Memorial Day Parade coming up this coming Saturday, May 23rd, 10 AM. The library will be participating. We will have a car with messages about we miss you, keep reading, things like that. I think it's too early to have messages about. You know, stay tuned, you know, look out for a big announcement coming soon or, you know, June 1st doors open. But we will be doing that, and I will be a judge in that parade. I've always wanted to judge a parade. My last thing is hoopla, but I think we've got that on the agenda someplace else. Do you want me to do this now? Or do you want me to do this some other time?
Do it now.
Okay. We have been going through our hoopla funds, the hook funds that we dedicated to the hoopla movie and ebook streaming service. Much faster than we had anticipated. So Upper Hudson has asked us to contribute $183 to get us to September. So the current thinking is that the funds that we've reserved for hoopla will be exhausted by the end of June with another $183 at our current levels of spending or current levels of media consumption. $183 should get us to September, which is when we had taken on hoopla when we signed the contract. We had originally advertised that this was something that we had from April through September for six months. If we do spend that additional 184 dollars, I would most likely take that from the audio visual. The AV budget, which our spending has been low so far this year with the past two months of not buying any additional AV materials. It's it's much lower than it ought to be, not ought to be, but it could be. One other thing that I was thinking about on that point was that we've got 31,000 credit card points. And we could parlay those 31,000 credit card points into 300 Amazon dollars. Or $250 cash. So we could recoup some of that money from the budget if we felt like it was, you know, if we felt like the the physical DVD, you know, collection was really hurting at the end of the year, then, you know, possibly we could use that money to to replace that. I don't think it will be missed. So that's all I've got from from the director's report, I think.
Does anybody have any other questions for Joe? Okay, not hearing any. Then let's move through the committee reports, and it should be pretty easy. Personnel did not meet. Program did not meet. We'll skip right over building for a second. Finance, we already talked about.
Well, actually, not 100% true.
Oh, okay. Then go ahead. Then actually, let's just go to the other ones first. Policy didn't meet. Long range planning didn't meet. Okay, so Elizabeth, take away with finance. Then we'll do building and then we'll move on.
Yes. So finance, other than the financial statements, we talked about two things, one of which is just kind of an appetizer for next month. We spent a good chunk of our meeting talking about what to do with our our reserves. As everyone knows, we have a large amount of assets tucked away in CDs that we keep rolling over every year or so and in our savings account. And it has been a perennial topic of conversation, what exactly we should do with that money. And so we talked about a couple of different options in the finance committee meeting, and those are going to be formalized and typed up into a list and sent to the general board so that we can talk about them as a board for next month. So the ball did get rolling on that, and that is something that we have something to look forward to for next month. We also talked about the assistant treasurer position. And is this on the agenda later or talk about it now?
Let's talk about it now. Go ahead.
Okay. And as as we've mentioned before, I am moving to Texas and Melanie has graciously offered to step up into the treasurer position. But that means that what Melanie is currently doing, which is the assistant treasurer position, is going to be vacant. And so we discussed different options for, one, recruiting an assistant treasurer. And two, what some different options are if, in fact, we did not recruit an assistant treasurer. In which case it would be, we talked about policies that are libraries had. And so tonight we wanted to see whether or not there was anyone that was interested in the assistant treasurer position. The the main responsibility is that the cash drops twice a month. So very important, but it's not it's not entering a whole bunch of accounting kind of stuff. That is something that we all gladly pay Jason to do. But but nonetheless, it is an important oversight job because by doing the cash drops, you are being that set of eyes that that gets the cash from the library to the bank. And so even though it's just, you know, a couple of hours every month, it is an important oversight and governance job. So I know that Dan had sent out the position description. Is there anyone that is thinking about this position or has any questions about it?
If we don't find somebody, could it possibly be a shared position so that you know, if there was some time when one person was indisposed, that somebody else could do it, that might make it more, you know, doable. I would like to consider it. I'm away sometimes, you know, during the summer, but quite a bit during the summer. So but you know, if we'd have no other options, I would consider it, especially if somebody wanted to, you know, take it on with me. But I think I could probably do it.
Well, that would be fabulous. We we actually did not think about what splitting the job would would look like. I imagine not incredibly different than the way it is right now. The only training is is really just the the dance steps on how to do the deposit and how to write it, the stuff in the spreadsheet. Is that right, Melanie?
Yes, that's it.
So so we would
And it is fairly flex, you know, we said twice a month, but but Joe and I will often work on what day works for both of us. Like, it definitely is not always a set schedule, you know, so that there's flexibility in that as well. I try to go. I did try to go, you know, every other Friday, but sometimes it just wouldn't work, and it would be like two and a half weeks or three weeks or a Tuesday. So it is, there is great flexibility in that as well.
Well, why don't I say I can do it? And I will.
Thank you, Paul. That is awesome.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Elizabeth?
And that is all finance committee has.
All right, cool. Now we'll go to the building committee. Who's gonna talk about the building? Anybody?
I'm prepared to talk about it. Joe wants to do it instead or jump in. He will. So basically, the old shelving that were made by David had been disassembled and his family came with a truck and took them away. Which then exposed that wall, that big long wall on the right should walk in. And so I patched the holes that were in there. There was some access holes cut through the wall, and those have been patched and other little nicks and scrapes were patched, and I painted the room. And today I assembled one of the sets of shelves, which would be on that short wall that goes towards the window when you walk in on your left. Tomorrow, I hope to assemble the, there's going to be on your right when you walk in, right next to the door, right beyond the door. There'll be a six foot set of shelves that are 18 inches deep and 6 feet long. And then on the far end that faces the door, you will see another two foot section that takes you over towards that big black pipe that runs vertically. So I don't see why that wouldn't be done tomorrow. The the electronics have been simplified and hopefully Joe has already said all this, but I apologize for being late too, by the way. But the electronics were simplified, and I was able to disconnect them briefly at Joe's guidance with Joe's guidance and then reassemble them so that Wi-Fi was basically uninterrupted. And we will then situate them on a shelf until our electronics person will come and do some reconfiguring and Joe can say more about that. So that's basically it on the back room. And I've got a panel to install on the wall outside the back room to the electronics to go for the fire system, the fire alarm system. They asked that something be put up there that they could then mount to. So that's basically it. I have not forgotten the shifting chimney cap. I've started scraping the railings, which are badly rusted at the bottom. I've got a product to to correct that situation. And then I assume there's more that Joe would like to say as well regarding the the timing of the fire alarm installation. And if there's any questions, I certainly am happy to answer them if I can, Judge.
Yep. Well, what is the status of the fire extinguisher?
I was gonna talk about that.
Another topic?
Not right now. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so after our last meeting or our sort of emergency meeting three weeks ago to approve the to approve international building systems as our vendor for the for the alarm system. We got back in touch with them, and we are now on their schedule for June 8th and 9th. We had hoped that we would be able to get this done while the library was still closed during quarantine. Unfortunately, that turned out not to be not to be the case. So so we will have to close one week after we reopen. We're gonna have to close for two days on that Tuesday and Wednesday, the 8th and 9th. No, I'm sorry, Monday and Tuesday. But it should not take any any more than those two days to get that that system installed. So we are, before that happens, we have to have Rick Grant come in and do some preparatory electrical work. He's willing to do that. Paul, have you spoken to Rick recently?
No, I have not. I hope that he was just staying in touch with international, but it's probably unlikely now that I think of it. But I'll be ready. But once this since this shelving is up, I just wanted to get that up so that he's going to be doing some wiring in that general vicinity, and I wanted to make sure that he didn't interfere with what the shelving, how the shelving got hung.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to call him.
Okay, I do think that it's it's probably best for the for international building systems and for and Rick to communicate directly rather than, you know, requiring us to, you know, relying on us to relay. But I think we'll at least need to reach out to Rick directly to get him to do that. And he, you know, the last time that we spoke, Paul and I to to Rick, he, you know, he said he was around. Had didn't have any plans. So he should be, he should be able to do that. We have had a couple of visits now from from Family Pest Control Solutions, and they have laid rodent traps. They have put out poison. They have done all sorts of things that they do. They found holes in walls, and they stuffed those with construction cloth and steel. Steel wool or whatever it is. Their return visit to check on the traps did not turn up any new rat activity. So that's good. There were a few unfortunate mice that caught got caught in the rat traps. So that goes, life of a mouse. But there was they're gonna kind of keep coming back. We have scheduled two follow up visits. We can have a monthly visit after that for $70 per visit. But really, you know, it's going to be until we don't see any signs of of new activity. And there weren't there weren't signs of new activity. So that's that's good. That's a good thing.
Now we're in phase three, right, Joe?
That's right. That's right. That's right.
Are you done?
I'm done on the building if Paul is, yeah.
Okay, cool. And the sneeze guard that's coming along too?
Oh, gosh, yes, the sneeze guard. Yes. So we we actually have to approve that.
Okay.
So we have a proposal for a sneeze guard for the for the desk. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but we never like approved the expenditure. It's $475 for an L-shaped 23 square foot, basically. Hey. Sorry. 23 square foot L-shaped sneeze guard that has passed through so that once the public is back in the building. Thank you, buddy. That will have the staff protected. So can somebody, does anybody have any questions about the sneeze guard?
Okay, can we get a motion to make that expenditure? Thank you. Seconded by Paul. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? All right, Joe, you got the sneeze guard.
Excellent. I didn't mention, but should that that's from Altamont Mirror and Glass. So I'm very happy to be supporting a small business in the village. It's not often we can do that, but when we can, good to be able to.
Excellent. Okay, so we've done the old business. I think we've covered all the new business. Does anybody have anything else they want to bring up? I just want to add, I just want to add one additional thing, and I'm just gonna say this because, Paul, I, we want to thank you for everything you're doing as part of the building committee, as well as taking on this other responsibility. It's it's wonderful, and thank you so much for your willingness to do this. So
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much.
And I get a motion to adjourn then.
Before that, I would also like to say, it sounds like there's a lot on Joe's plate. And I think we're all very deeply appreciative, but it's a some, there's a lot going on right now. And thank you for everything. It seems like you have your hand in every every challenge and great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, folks, at 8:19. All right, seconded. All right.
I can't do the hand motions.
All right, everybody said yes. Enjoy your evening, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's say it was Dick. Thank you. Thank you all. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, good night.